Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting of June 17th, 2025. The meeting is started at 7:35. I do see a quorum of the Select Board present. We have in the hall Vice Chair Deborah Roberts and members Joe McChrisky and Scott Carrera. And joining us online is Lou Gieto. Because we have a member who's online, we'll have to do things a little bit differently. There's a little bit I've got to read ahead of time. And additionally, all of our votes will have to be taken by roll call vote. So let me begin here. In accordance with Chapter -- actually, these readers, getting old. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, which extends the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30th, 2027, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC, cable television, and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the Chair's discretion. If you're able, please rise to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. So we're going to begin tonight's meeting. We'd like to take this opportunity to present a citation and some tokens of our gratitude to longstanding member of our community who's, even though I think now is currently living out of town, nevertheless continues to contribute to the town of Stoughton meaningfully. This is Mark Snyder. Most people know of him if they haven't actually met him in person. And we'd just like to take this opportunity to, if you don't mind joining us, Mr. Snyder. I'm over to you. You mind joining me? I appreciate you taking the time. And as I mentioned, I know you're out of town now, though you still run Stoughton News. Where do you currently live?
I live in Plymouth.
Wonderful town.
Started here and...
Over here. We've got a couple of things we'd like to share with you. And one year as interim chair. And whereas, for 22 years, Mark Snyder wrote a weekly column in the Stoughton Journal. And whereas, for eight years, Mark Snyder hosted the Snyder-Stoughton TV, top-rated show airing on weekends at 7:30. And whereas, on December 18th, 2015, Mark Snyder created the public group Stoughton News on Facebook with over 16,000 members and followers. And whereas, Mark Snyder has served several boards, coached youth soccer, basketball, football, baseball, and hosted fundraisers over the years. And whereas, Mark Snyder has committed a lifetime to working in the service of the town of Stoughton. Now, therefore, we, Stephen M. Cavey, Deborah C. Roberts, Scott D. Carrera, Louis F. Gieto, and Joseph M. McChrisky, in recognition of decades of outstanding service to the town of Stoughton, do hereby urge all citizens to join with us and other townwide to thank Mark Snyder. In wind is thereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the grace seal of the town of Stoughton to be affixed on this 17th day of June, 2025. Thank you very much, sir. There you go. And also, we do have something additionally for you.
Hello, and how are you doing, Mark? Nice seeing you again. We received this from the Congressman's office, Congressman Lynch. And he wanted to certify and give you special congressional recognition. So on behalf of our Congressman, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to do just some pictures and...
Some pictures?
Yeah, quick pictures will bring everybody up. For the time being, we're going to take a very quick recess, but we will be back in just a couple of minutes. Some call back to order the Select Board meeting of June 17th, 2025. Thank you again, Mr. Snyder, for coming here and visiting us. A couple of the members would like to express some thoughts, and I would like to honor that. Mr. McChrisky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saying that I've known Mark a long time, it goes back to the mid-'90s when Mark moved into Stoughton. And there was a stint from 2007 to maybe 2014 or so that I ran the Events Committee for a few years with a good group of people, got a lot of things done. And I could say that I don't think anybody could drive Mark as nuts as I could. But he always took any event and ran it like it was something out of Hollywood, you know, had his own flair, you know, and it was really somebody that can bring information together. Stoughton News was one of the first Facebook pages that was dedicated to Stoughton and allowed people to have their voices be heard in different way. And Mark was good enough to keep it balanced, because as we know, sometimes, you know, what Facebook can be like. So, Mark, I just wanted to say to you personally, for all the work we've done together, whether it was the haunted hayride, or the Easter egg hunt, or, you know, whatever it was, all the numerous parades, thank you for making a difference and being a shining star of Stoughton.
Just something simple, Mark, to you. Thank you for putting yourself out there, always being fair, always being willing to talk to somebody, always being willing to get in the middle of something and smooth it out. It's great character, and I appreciate everything you did and for being a good friend. Thank you.
So I do have a couple of comments. One thing I would say is that sometimes I try to be thoughtful of the fact that people might be a little nervous to speak in public, and so I usually don't make a big thing out of it. But I know you're not a minute of few words. And if you'd like to speak, I wanted to definitely give you the opportunity. Some people are nervous by it, but I know you've been in front of a camera for quite a while. So if there's something you'd like to say, by all means, we'd love to hear it. But, okay, so...
I love Stoughton, always will. What can I do here? I will continue to do it.
Thank you so much. A lot of, you know, my own, as I got involved in politics in the town, I feel like our paths have intersected quite a bit. I know you've got a lot of people that you intersect with. But I just have to say that I've always been very grateful to be able to work with you and to be able to converse with you. And I'm just grateful to have gotten the chance to know you a little bit and for the work that you've done for this town, which has spanned, as we just mentioned, decades. And it's a life's work, and it's, as you know, not always fun, not always easy, and you never stop doing it. The persistence is something that I think people should take to heart. They should really, you know, look at that, like, what does it mean to do something for 40 years? You know, or, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it was, sorry, I mentioned 40 parades. But, you know, for decades of dedication to a community, it's, as I said, not easy. And it kept coming back for more. And I just want to say I really am very grateful that you did. Thank you so much. Ms. Roberts.
Yes, and I would like to personally say how much we appreciate you. It always made me feel really happy when we were in the parades, and I would look to the side and I would see you there, recording. So thank you very much. And I'm sure if I felt happy, the residents did as well. So on behalf of the residents, I would like to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is an interview for the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority and appointment. I'd like to invite the members of the Redevelopment Authority to join us and to open their meeting. While everyone's getting sort of up here, I just want to mention that we've done this once before in the last year or so. And as a, my own personal sentiment, I feel like, since it is the appointment of the Redevelopment Authority, I think it's appropriate to have the Chair of the Redevelopment Authority lead this section of the meeting. So I'm going to be turning over the gavel to Ms. Roberta Harbeck, the Chair of the SRA.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before we start, I would like to know if we're still under the rule of no new business after 9:30 PM.
I am, we'll have to check that. I'm not aware of that as being the rule. I think we've in the past discussed it. We can certainly make an effort to do that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Let me get you a chair. No, you're not standing.
Oh, Jesus. I didn't say it, sorry. Okay, that's on, yeah. I know. Okay, so I want to start with opening the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority meeting. Do I have a motion to open up our meeting?
Motion made.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're here tonight. The Stoughton Redevelopment Authority has a slot open until April of next year. For the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, we have three candidates. So what we're going to do is I'm going to call the candidates up one at a time as it reads on the agenda, take just a couple of minutes to say whatever you want to say. We don't need to hear your live story. Make it, you know, what you want to say. And then we'll go around the table, and we'll see if anybody has any questions. And then we will go for nominations, and we don't need a second. And we will take a vote, and we'll find the lucky new Stoughton Redevelopment Committee meeting member. Okay, so, does that work for everybody? Okay.
Madam Chair.
All right.
Since, I apologize, but I just wanted to remind you that, which I know you might already be aware of, but because we have a member who's remote, we're going to have to do everything by roll call.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
So I'm going to start with the first person, which is Bob, Bob Kirby. We already opened up the meeting. They already opened up their meeting.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to present myself as a candidate for the SRA Committee. I appreciate the moment to state my intentions. Basically, I've been interested in serving the town in a greater capacity for the last several years. I got involved as a town meeting rep and so forth. I've been a resident for 25 years, but I haven't done much to help the town until more recently. I've been interested in being involved because, at this point in my life, I've had more time available to do it, whereas my professional life kind of stood in the way in the past. But I've reached a milestone where I can now contribute. I've had a professional life in music, but alongside of that, because my family roots were in real estate and construction, I always had a hand in that world. My father had many buildings in the city of Boston, and I grew up going into the buildings. And later on, I got into construction itself through apprenticing with my brothers. So I've spearheaded renovations in the city of Boston and done different things like that that have given me a kind of insight into the mechanisms of rehabilitation and trying to consider the practical and aesthetic aspects of property development and so forth. And I think those skills and insights, along with my lack of a personal agenda, I just want to see what's best for the town. I have an open mind, but I want to be realistic and not pie in the sky and look at what we physically can do as a committee to make the town better. So that's where I'm at. I'm hoping you'll consider me. I think that my integrity and my skill set could be an asset to the Board, and I just want to serve more for our town. That's basically it.
Beautiful, thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Gieto online. Mr. Gieto, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Rachel.
Hello. Thank you for coming, and I want to say I heard you sing, I believe, the last month, and it was very beautiful, so thank you, at the Stoughton Old Music Society. I'm so not used to speaking into this. I wanted to know what your thoughts would be about the urban renewal plan that has been created for the SRA and which we hope to be passing soon?
Well, I think that each aspect of it has to be looked at individually. I think that there are some pluses and minuses to it. But realistically, I think that efforts have stalled and failed over the last several decades because there hasn't been a consistent private partnership or private initiative with all the support of the town to make things happen. So I think that we need to evaluate it in that light. So we can have our ideals about how things should move forward, but I think that practicality has to serve us first. So I'm open to looking at it again with fresh eyes, but I think that we just have to be cautious as we...
Are there any specifics in the urban renewal plan that you object to?
Well, I think that there has to be kind of a marriage between both the historical integrity of our town and the practicality of some of the more contemporary designs. And that's a tough type road to walk, frankly. I think that how we navigate that politically is probably one of the biggest challenges we would face as a committee.
Right, so the urban renewal plan has been approved by the Planning Board as well, just so you're aware. So the next step would be to send it to the Select Board. Is that something that you think you would be in favor of?
Well, it depends. It depends on how it's implemented and that. So it's a qualified answer.
No more questions.
Bob, any questions?
I just want to say thanks for putting your name in for the position. Thank you.
Deborah.
All I want to say is thank you for putting your name in. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, so I just have one question, and it's just sort of fundamental to the total role, and I'm sure you'll have a thoughtful opinion about this. For the downtown, which is one of the primary roles of the Redevelopment Authority, would be to work through the downtown. If there was, you know, either Top 3 or the Silver Bullet Project that you think would be the biggest bang for the buck for the town in the downtown, what do you think it would be?
Well, I think the primary hope is to make it a destination. So while we've taken some efforts to make it more aesthetically pleasing, and there's been a few changes to the logistics, it's still not quite streamlined in terms of traffic flow and parking. So I think parking, you know, so some of the kind of ancillary infrastructure, we have space over, for example, where the youth center is. And there's other places that we could be integrating, I think, in a more holistic way. But, you know, having some restaurants and things of that ilk that, you know, basically appeal to a more broad kind of patronage. Right now, we have like an abundance of kind of beauty, nail shops, and these kinds of things. So you're going to have a certain kind of niche constituency that looks at it. We need to diversify a bit in terms of the kinds of businesses and so forth that are in there. So I think we need to step up the game in attracting the kind of private partnerships to get the kind of money that could facilitate an overhaul from that vantage point. I mean, we've got to think about how do we broaden the mercantile base? And that's going to take parking, it's going to take infrastructure that supports their businesses. And I don't think, in the current state of things, it has enough incentive for those developers and so forth to really, you know, bite down on it, so...
I hate to do this, but I'm just going to ask you again. Do you have like a specific project, or is there anything like specific about...
No, I don't have a specific project. No, but I'm just thinking about the overall, you know, framework. But I know that, for example, when Mr. Stagnoni was involved in trying to further the downtown, the theater was a major piece of that. I think that the theater is worth looking at again. But again, we have had efforts that, over the last decades, have floundered. And so I think we need to start with, you know, some of the most important infrastructure things and look at how they might be integrated and improved. And keep in mind, you know, how that affects the town's budget, because, you know, everything comes down to where does the funding come from and so forth.
And last question I'll ask, on a scale of 1 to 10, how important is accessibility in having buildings in compliance with ADA and to you?
Oh, I think it's important. I think it's absolutely germane. When I spearheaded a million-dollar-plus renovation on Newbury Street in Boston, we had to become ADA compliant. So it involved completely putting in a new elevator. I mean, there was massive infrastructure changes. So I'm familiar with, you know, the logistics of having to undertake that have broad implications. And so, but I think it's worth it. You've got to do it. You've got to make it available to everyone. So, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
On a scale of 1 to 10?
Of town.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You good? Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Through you, Mr. Kirby, you've done urban renewal work in Boston. This is a suburban town, so we want to kind of keep that feel. Everybody talks about the downtown. Steve and I were both on the urban renewal plan, and we kind of got so far, and then some of the stuff that we had talked about, the consultant kind of totally lost view of what our town was. I've been talking about the downtown, and everybody goes, oh, we've got to attract good stuff. It's going to be a destination. You can talk all the destination and all the stuff you want. Without a parking facility, nothing in this town is going to go anywhere down there. And we sat at a meeting that Tom put forward, and everybody was all putting up their stuff. And the gentleman Tom brought in said, you've got plenty of apartment stuff, you've got plenty of this going on, you don't have enough parking. And that's what I said to Tom. That's what's killing the center right out. You can put that theater back together, it's going to die in a month. I put it to Tom, I says, the old Randolph Savins got to go. It's serving no proper good purpose to this town, even though it's a youth, whatever, recreation hall. That can be moved. But that's where your parking garage belongs. That's what's going to light up the center. And that's what I want the SRA to really think about, not putting buildings down a side street or over this or over that. We have that all licked with the downtown revitalization that we just passed, all that. We got to focus on a parking garage, because the more stuff you build in this partnership... We were going to get like 200 and something spaces a floor. And then came in, let's partner with somebody, and they can put apartments up above. When it was over and done with, we were going to get 75 spaces out of four floors that we could have had without apartments. And that's the only thing. I implore whoever's going to win this spot, that's the smartest thing that's got to get going. All you're going to have is nail salons. People that come, 15, 20 minutes, they're gone. You want people to come and eat in this town because we've got all those liquor licenses, and they're just all hanging out there? You got to have a place for people to come and park. That's why Norwood does so well. They got parking behind their things, and they've planned for it. Alls we need is that one spot, and it'll be cure a lot of things. What's your view on that?
I'm 100% agreement. I think about the times that I go to the center as a destination. My family and I go to Avocados to eat every now and then, because who doesn't like Mexican food? And anyhow, it's often, you know, if we get a space right on Washington Street, hooray. But if we don't, then it's a process to find parking, and it's not always intuitive, like, is this a legal space? Am I going to get towed from here or ticketed? So it's not a no-brainer. And I think that needs to change in order to make the town as the town center as a destination feasible.
That it? Okay, Peter?
Yeah, Bob, thank you for applying. It's great. Mine's more of a practical question. With your family history in real estate and construction in the city of Boston, have any of those endeavors been in collaboration or affiliation with the Boston Redevelopment Authority?
No.
None at all?
Not at all.
That's all my only question. Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you. Bob, everyone's been asking direct questions on specific areas. Sometimes leadership, when you get elected, is jumping over the edge and building your wings on the way down. So I'd like to hear just a couple of ideas that you pop right off your head that you want to accomplish. We're going to throw some things on the wall and see what sticks. Just throw out some ideas of what, why you want to be on the Redevelopment Authority, what you want to accomplish. I want to know what you want to do, what you're going to bring to that group.
Well, we've already talked about it here. Number one, a thing that's been front and center of my mind is the parking in the downtown. I think that this has been an ongoing issue. It's affected me personally, it's affected others. You know, the logistics of the traffic through there, while we've made changes in the last decade on the traffic flow and so forth, I think there's still a lot of improvement to be made there. It's often a bottleneck. People get confused on which lane to be in and so forth. So I think that whole thing, the fundamental flow and the parking and so forth would be one of the things that I personally would like to look at along with the community. Obviously, it doesn't work in a vacuum. So I think that's number one. I think there's other issues about housing for elderly and so forth that we could look at. I mean, the town has assets that are perhaps underutilized or worthy to be sold off and whatnot, and perhaps, you know, different aspects of elderly housing and different shapes and sizes could be considered. So we don't have to have this homogenous type of outlook on what type of elderly housing we have, but we could have single-family type structures within a community. There can be apartment complexes. But, you know, different things that, you know, will serve our seniors in the town, I think that's something that the SRA could contribute to as well. So those two things have worked kind of first and foremost in my consciousness about, you know, things that I would like to be a part of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Next up will be Natasha Pakka. Whenever you're ready. Hi.
know, things that I would like to be a part of. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Next up will be Natasha Parker. Whenever you're ready. Hi. Press it.
Natasha, you need to read now close and read what means that's all. Thank you.
There we go. Okay, sorry. I'm new to this. Thank you, and my name is Natasha Parker. And I'm pretty much new to this whole environment, so I'm a little bit nervous.
That's fine.
I lived in Stone, well, I'm living in Stone now for about five years. And pretty much my reasoning for applying to be part of this authority is it's coming from a user standpoint. Coming in, going to the commuter rail every day, seeing the commuter rail station and saying, why is this empty? You go to Canton Junction, similar setup. There's a coffee shop in there. There's individuals that's able to stand in that depot station. I don't go to downtown Stone just because there's really nothing there for me nor my kids. And that's kind of what I want to change. I want to be able to go into downtown Stone and fellowship with my community. I want to be able to go out and eat. I don't want to drive to downtown Boston. I don't want to go to, even though I love some of the restaurants in Easton, but I feel that we could do that here. And that's more of my passion as to why I'm applying. I don't have experience in local politics. My experience is more coming from actually real estate. I've been in the real estate industry for over 20 years, more on the finance side. I've attended meetings like this more in the background for support of my development team. I've attended meetings in Weston, Waltham, where sometime, Town of Marlborough, where meetings could be very fiery. I've seen it, I've heard it. I know why some neighbors don't want a restaurant due to the increase of liquor. I see neighbors indicating they want places to go where they could, again, it's going back to fellowshipping and just having someplace to go. Again, it's always a matter of, I don't want to drive 40 minutes just to have a nice sit down meal. I think we can do a lot here in Stone. Stone population is increasing. I for one, we moved from a different town into Stone because we wanted to be able to raise our kids in a town and not more of a city vibe, but more of a merry of the two. It could be a city, but it's really more of a town feel. Again, that's why I've applied. I'm applying because more of a passion. Again, I don't have experience in navigating where things were. I go on, I actually go on the town website pretty much like maybe once a week just to kind of get information. My husband say I'm crazy, but then he asked me, hey, what's going on with the traffic down here? I'm like, I actually know. So again, I'm able to try and answer questions just from more historical in terms of where I currently work, where I worked in the past and how we've come in and developed great things. I worked for over 15 years for Boston Properties. We've helped actually develop the garden. So I've seen things like that. I've also seen a more smaller scale where we've developed beautiful mixed use sites where it's residential, a little bit of commercial space, retail. So I understand the dynamics. I don't want to be long, but that's really my standpoint as to why I'm applying tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Gito again. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions for Natasha?
No.
Thank you.
I read everyone's resume and I'm listening.
I'll start on the other end. Joe, do you want to start this time?
Sure, thank you. Same question is that it's great talking about a resume. What does Natasha want to do? Sitting on this board, what do you want to do to be innovative? Throw me out a couple of ideas that gives me an idea of what you're thinking and what you would bring to the table.
Well, first, again, from just observation, and again, I mentioned the commuter rail, though I do see a trailer out there, so I'm like, okay, there's something being done. But again, it was what's going on with the commuter rail station at the Stone T stop? That was one. Our town center, that is something that I want to revitalize. I want to be able to go to Stone Town Center. Those were the two big ticket items. I kind of want to come in, understand, have a discussion and move forward. If it's an update of that urban renewal plan, because I think the last, I think it was actually prior before moving here, was the last time, or at least that was rolled out. So if it's getting a new development coming in, doing some feasibility studies, some traffic studies, I think that's something that we could do.
Thank you.
Peter?
Again, thank you for applying. Much appreciated. As to Joe has elaborated more to see what you think about what should be done in the town, I am a practical and ask the practical questions on that. With your real estate background and especially in finance, again, I'm going to ask the same question I asked the last candidate on that one. Is any dealings or collaboration affiliations with the Boston Redevelopment Authority?
I believe at Boston Properties, we have done some work with the, or at least talked to, I don't know if it was an actual collaboration, but they are part of these meetings and discussions we've had in the Boston city.
Okay, thank you. And again, your resume was very impressive, so it's, good luck.
Thank you.
Scott?
Thank you. Thank you for putting your name in. But just to make something easy for you, you won't have to worry about what's going on at the depot because the town manager was very astute in getting some grants and it's, this board voted as a community center for the town. So you don't have to worry about what's going on down there because there's a lot going to be going on down there.
Nice.
So that clears that up. I did read your resume and it's good to get people involved. I don't go on the website because I'm not a big computer guy. So I'm all paper, yeah. But that should have been on the website about the depot and you can follow that. All right? Thanks.
Steve?
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
I want to tease Mr. Carrera for a second and say that we should have the website printed on paper.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, I tease him, but the fact is that my computer's crashed on numerous occasions. He's the only one who has a copy of anything, so I should probably not tease him too much. But so I'm going to ask you the same questions I had before. You know, the one thing I'm really interested in hearing, and you know, the jurisdiction of the Redevelopment Authority is, you know, not necessarily intuitive. It's a little bit, the way that Stone does it is we always have our spin on it. So like, it's okay if this isn't like, you know, feel free to just throw it out there and it's okay to be wrong, you know, essentially. I kind of interested more in your thought process than anything else. But is there like, you know, a silver bullet project or something that you just say like, hey, we could just do this one thing? I think that that would create all sorts of, you know, solutions to other problems. Is there a silver bullet that you can think of?
I'm a big fan of mixed use. I'm a big fan of bringing in where people could work, live and play. It's worked for downtown Boston, so, and not, again, trying to bring a city vibe into Stone because Stone is a town. I definitely love it as a town, but the work, live and play is what I would go crazy for.
Excellent. So the other question I asked, and I'll ask you as well, is related to accessibility and compliance with ADA. On a scale of one to 10, of the projects that you're going to look at, where do you rank that?
Absolutely a 10. My youngest, she's on the disability side, so I'm absolutely 100% in favor of any ADA compliance that we would need.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deborah?
Thank you very much. Thank you for putting your name in the hat, Mrs. Parker. On May 8th, Reggie Nunnely, who was a past treasurer of the SRA, sent your resume to Chairperson Harback and to Chairman Cavey and myself. He actually said your strengths are accountant, real estate accountancy, and your enthusiastic disposition. And I found that very enlightening to me. Can you explain a little bit more of how you would bring your accounting skills to this position or your real estate accountancy skills to this position? I think it would be valuable, but I would like to hear from you, Mrs. Parker.
Sure. So currently, right now, I work for a developer. Prior to that, I worked for operator and developer, a little bit different in terms of the cash flow. On the developer side, we have investors. We have a strict budget, obviously, that we will go by, have contingencies. We have money that's allocated due to meetings such as this where neighbors would say, hey, in order for you to develop something here, we want you, developer, to allocate $2 million to rework our traffic flow. If you want to bring this here, you need to redevelop our parks. Where I come in is obviously working in the budget and making sure, reporting back to our investor that, hey, this is where our money has been spent year to date, month to date, quarter to date. Accounting, I've been an accountant for probably 30-plus years. I've started at the Big Five, which is now the Big Four, so accounting is my life. I love accounting. I love numbers. I've been on boards where I served as treasurer. It's my meat and potatoes. I could go on and on about accounting and I live and breathe it. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Bob?
I just want to say thank you for applying for the position.
Thank you.
Your resume was very impressive.
Thank you.
Rachel?
Thank you so much for applying for the position. I wanted to ask the same question that I asked Mr. Kirby. What are your thoughts on the urban renewal plan that, again, has been passed by the planning board and would be in preparation for passing back to the select board very soon?
Well, with the plan, which, again, I reviewed just on a high level, if it's been passed, I think it's something that we should revisit and make sure that it's still suitable for what we want to roll out for today. Because as we know, things do change. And as long as it's still applicable, I think it's a discussion that our board should probably discuss.
The latest version was from 2024, so.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. And also, I wanted to know what, as an accountant, as a real estate, you have a lot of experience working with a lot of different groups. And I wanted to know, like specifically as an accountant and someone who is very, very organized, how you deal with working with a lot of different parts, different moving parts, keeping track of deadlines, as this is something, the SRA is a very interesting position in town government and you have to be able to work well with a lot of different committees and be able to keep in mind and keep track of a lot of different moving parts because the portfolio is larger than I realize, basically.
For me, staying organized is top tier. I actually use something that's called the four squares, where I have, in one square, to-do lists. I have a working list. I have a list or a square that's more of what I call pass-through, meaning it's something that should be done relatively soon than later. And there's an other. And I utilize that square every day that keeps me on track of where I need to do things in terms of today, within the next 10 minutes, the week, or if I have to delegate it. So it really just keeps me on track mentally as well as, okay, what can I kind of push through for tomorrow? What can I push through for next week? That's how I kind of keep my mind structured and making sure that if someone asks me for something, I try to tell them, hey, I can't get it to you today? I'll get it to you tomorrow. But there's always a response.
Thank you so much and thank you for applying. I hope that you continue to be involved with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On deck, John Rosenblatt.
First, I want to, oh, that's right. First, I want to say thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a Lyson's Real Estate Agent, and I feel that's synergistic to this role. And I have many strengths that would be an asset for SRA, but that's just words on paper. I want to speak to my actions. I've been to SRA meetings, yet none of those running have. Months ago, a position was available and I ran and I was out in the cold collecting signatures and getting on the ballot and doing debates and running ads and soliciting for donations and research. I'm very interested in being a part of the senior homes project by the senior center. And I'm also interested in the urban renewal plan implementation. Regarding the others running, I know Bob Kirby and he's a very personable, intelligent, non-confrontational and honorable guy. I don't know Natasha, but she seems like a really nice, sweet person and very adept, both of them. When the seat was first available, I did all the aforementioned hard work and effort. And then the day before the election, the opposition told a major bold-faced lie about me. They said I was a convicted felon. And I repeat, I am not a convicted felon, but this was put out on Facebook. That's a lie. So this, did this have an effect on my campaign? Maybe. But there were people who also said that they would not vote for me because of it. We'll never know how much of an effect that lie has had. And these lies affect how I'm perceived in the community and have a detrimental effect on my livelihood. But who cares, right? As long as I didn't win. That wasn't the only lie told. They claimed that I wasn't having, that I wasn't for the new school while my opponent was and their stance was more popular. The truth is that I was for the school, but I just wanted a less expensive one and I wanted the money to come out of the budget so we didn't have another tax on the residents. Wow, what a terrible thing I was for, saving the taxpayers' money. Okay, I'm definitely not saying because I was lied about, I should be appointed, but having vicious lies of that magnitude are something that no one should have to endure. That's what I'm saying. Couple it with the fact that there could have been two open seats at the election, but that didn't happen. And whether for nefarious reasons or not, I simply just don't know, so I really can't say. But it's just a really bad look. What is the point of having elections in our town if you're going to make up nasty lies about people just to win? And if you have to lie about the opposition to win, that's cheating and you still end up being a loser. In conclusion, I am told, I was told often that the one-party rule that we all should have a problem with expects to handpick a specific person that they want while at the same time making sure that those other people don't ever get appointed to anything. Because the opposition has gone to great lengths in taking such drastic measures to keep me and others like me out of committees is partly why I'm here tonight. I also wanted to try to give my abilities to the committee, but the other thing I wanted to do was shine a light on the injustice. Is this what our town has come down to? Why are we even bothering to have elections? You've made it clear that my kind isn't welcome here. Or the recusal would have been accepted to make sure that fairness prevailed in everyone's eyes. So I don't expect the right thing to So I don't expect the right thing to be done, but this dictatorial unjust behavior really needs to stop.
Anything else?
I've done things. Wasn't that enough?
No, no. I didn't know if you had anything else. I'll start with you again, Mr. Gito. I know you read everybody's resume, but do you want to say anything?
Not a word.
Ask a question? He said no. Okay. I'll start with you, Rachel.
Hi, I wanted to know, I know we discussed this during our debate during this, but I would like to know your feelings on the urban renewal plan?
Well, I feel that as long as we can maintain ourselves being a town, because so many people feel that way, that if the majority of people want to pursue 15-minute cities and make us into a city, that you need to have another side of the voice. You can't have an echo chamber. You need to have both sides of the debate, and you need to follow trajectories. And that's what I'm really good at, and that's what I would offer the SRA.
Just so you're aware, there is no mention of the 15-minute cities in the urban renewal plan?
Yes, but it is an aspect that the MBTA issue, it factors in. Even if it's not in the urban renewal plan.
It's not in the urban renewal plan.
There's a lot of things that aren't in the urban.
So is there something in the urban renewal plan that you're really happy about and excited about pushing forward?
Well, there are things that are good, and there are things that are bad.
I'd love to hear about the good things.
Well, I think that if we have somebody, if we have everybody in the echo chamber, as I said before, we're never going to get anywhere, because we're, you need somebody that can see the opposite views, that can take things on a trajectory to point out what could, what the possible detriments are. And I don't think that's done, and that's what I would bring to the table.
I completely agree with you about needing to see the opposite side of things. And I'm very sad that your experience seems to have been so negative. And I would really like to hear you speak about some positive things that you would like to put forward.
Absolutely. Parking, you took the words out of my mouth. I was, I had that in my thing. I was thinking of actually the same place you thought, but I was also thinking of that house that's kind of run down next door. I was hoping that we could pursue that and make parking there, because I don't think we need one. If we're going to keep doing housing over and over and over again, that brings more people in. And then, following the trajectory, you need to then have parking or other facilities that, for the people to utilize. You just can't keep bringing in housing all the time and inundating us with people all the time, because the traffic gets affected. And those are the things that I bring to the table, to see those kind of trajectories.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Bob?
I just want to say thank you for putting your name in, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Debra?
Thank you for putting your name in, Ms. Jonna.
Thank you.
Rachel asked the main question that I had, and you answered it.
And I want to apologize for referring to you not as the vice chair, because I haven't been keeping up with things. I was out of commission for a while, so I apologize.
No worries. No worries.
Good for you.
Okay, no worries.
Thanks.
Steve?
Thank you, Chairwoman. So same questions that I asked the other candidates. I'm curious about any sort of like top project or sort of civil bullet project that you think would be especially good for the downtown?
Yeah, we definitely need parking, and we definitely need to get the flow of the traffic a lot better, because I was trying to get to a FinCom meeting, and I left my house at 6:30, and it's a five-minute drive, if that. And I was 10 minutes late one time. So that really irks me, and it's one of my pet peeves. Also, you had also mentioned to people about the ADA compliance. I am so for that, because I just recently hurt my leg. And I was using a cane for a couple of weeks. Thank goodness, it's not a problem anymore. But I related to the people. I can understand now. I have a greater insight into that, into disabilities now. I mean, I always cared about it, but now my insight is even greater, having experienced it firsthand.
I relate to that as well, where you know the people, you want people to be safe and happy. But when, when things are difficult for you, you really gain a unique appreciation for that.
Exactly.
Second question was the ADA compliance number one, so.
Beat you to it.
Thank you for getting out in front of it. But thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Scott?
I don't think I have to say anything other than more than she likes my pack and idea.
Selling that tonight, Scott. If they like it or not, you're selling it. Peter?
Yeah, thank, no, she's already answered all my questions, but thank you very much for applying. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Joe?
Thank you. Jonah, the same question. We're throwing things against the wall that you want to do. What do you want to stick?
All right.
How are you going to get it done?
Okay, as I said, the parking and having more housing means having more people, and we have to address that, because you just can't have more people without following through on the other aspects, because it affects it. I also feel that, I was a treasurer for a nonprofit, and I also have the financial backing from the Fin, from FinCom. And I also feel my real estate collaboratively would be good aspects to make me an asset for SRA. But I don't think it's going to happen, but I would like it to happen, because you would be getting a great person, actually, and all three of us. I just feel that I put a lot of effort in, and I would like to see that effort not be for nothing.
Anything else, Joe? You're all set? Okay, thank you, Jonna. All right, so now we're going to start with nominations. Like I said, they do not have to be seconded. And I'm going to ask Lou first, because he's online. Lou, did you want to nominate anybody?
I'd nominate Robert Kirby.
I didn't hear him. Did he? Can you repeat that, Lou? I'm sorry.
I would nominate Robert Kirby.
Thank you. Okay, so Lou is Robert Kirby. Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Natasha Parker.
Okay, so that is Natasha. Do I have any other nominations?
Madam Chairperson, I am nominating Natasha. I know you said you didn't want a second, but I wanted to go on record that I'm nominating her.
Okay, so we're twin nomination here?
Yes.
Okay, so. Debra, okay. Anybody else, now that I'm looking to the right? Are we good? All right, I'm going to go, and I'm going to start with Lou. And you can either vote for Bob or Natasha. All right, Lou, who would you like to vote for?
Robert Kirby.
Thank you.
Natasha Parker.
I should be writing this down, but. Well, I know, but I'm trying to take the minutes for us, too, so I'm writing who it is. All right, Bob?
Robert Kirby.
Debra?
Natasha Parker.
Steve?
Natasha Parker.
Scott?
Bob Kirby.
Peter?
Natasha Parker.
Joe?
Natasha Parker.
Thank you. And I would vote for Bob Kirby. So it appears that Natasha Parker, do I have that correct? Five to four. Do everybody agree with me? Congratulations, Natasha. Thank you, Bob and Jonna, for applying. We will, we will be in touch with you. Our next meeting will be the second Monday of July. All your information, I'm sorry, is on your resume, I'm assuming, your email? Okay, beautiful. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Oh, I got to make a motion, too. Do we have a motion?
Motion made.
All in favor? Okay. The redevelopment meeting has been closed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to take a two-minute recess. So, evening, everybody. It's 8:40. We're going to call back to order the June 17th, 2025, meeting of the select board. I know we have, next on the agenda is the, a couple more appointments, but we've got some folks who are on a little bit of a deadline, so we're going to move item number five right now. We're going to cover, this is the to-approve transfer of $1,142,000 from the MWRA Capital Infrastructure Fund to Project 10806, Article 26 Annual Town Meeting, May 6th, 2024. This is, presenting is Keith Anastasia and Elizabeth Zalaski. As always, wonderful to see you both. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. So. Yeah, yeah. Floor is yours. Thank you so much.
I'll take the first spot. The purpose of this tran-
Sorry, could you pull the mics a little closer?
Sorry. The purpose of this transfer is to fill the obligation for the Pratt's Court Wide Treatment Improvement Project.
Sorry, guys, we've got a couple, a little bit of talking in the background. If we could allow the people who are speaking to be heard? Thank you.
We had a borrowing authorization of $4,440,000, and this goes back to an article two years ago, or a year ago. And Mr. Anastasia can speak to the project itself. The recommended funding is from the MWRA Infrastructure Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Pratt's Court PFAS improvements that need to be done, these regulatory compliance that all municipalities have to go through, all water departments. There was a, the estimated funding, which was approved, as Finance Director mentioned. We were a shortfall on, through the bid process. Bids came in at a lot higher. So this is just to make up for the shortfall so we can fund this project and keep in compliance with the regulatory authority.
Great, thank you so much. Do any members of the board have any questions? Mr. Gito, I want to offer you the opportunity. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I'm in favor of this. If you want me to make a motion, I will make a motion.
Sure thing. So there's a motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded by, so the motion was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. Just before we go into this, I do want to say, this is the PFAS process. Anytime we talk about this, I do want to remind people that if you're on well water, this is something you really ought to look into with regard to your own water supply. It's not something the town's monitoring on your behalf. Either tying into the town water, once this is in place, would be great if you're not able to get the appropriate testing done for your own well.
Correct.
But the, I just want to make sure that people who are on well water are aware this is also a problem that they have to face. This is not unique to our water program.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for sticking around. I really appreciate it. Have a great evening. Okay, we'll head back into the various town board and committee appointments. This is item number four on our agenda. Unless the members have any objection, what I would like to be able to do is perhaps have any place where there's more seats than there are applicants, or the same number of seats as there are applicants, and vote those in a block. That would include the Board of Assessors, there's two vacancies, and Francis Bernini, who's the incumbent, is requesting to be renominated or reappointed. The Brockton Area Transit Representative, this is Joseph M. McCrisky, incumbent. I'm going to hold off on the constable one. That's something we should probably cover. But we have Council on Aging, we have Brian Butler as incumbent. Kina Hu, hopefully I didn't mispronounce your name, I apologize if I did. Diane Shemtov and Martin West, both Diane and Martin are incumbents as well. Library trustees, we have two, David Lambert and Sheila Osborne, both incumbents. Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that is Deborah Roberts, incumbent. Open Space Committee, Seth Fran Bernini, Jay McDonald, and Jasmine Tangue. Hopefully I didn't mispronounce your name, I apologize if I did. All three incumbents. Planning Board, Paul Demuse, incumbent. And the 300th Anniversary, that's Marie Montima and Jennifer Sears. So if, if the board is, would like to do it some other way, I'll entertain that. But otherwise, we can nominate these in a block.
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, so the nomination was made by Vice Chair Roberts, and it was seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor? Well, we'll have to go one by one, apologize. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you very much for your applications. If any of the people who were just appointed wanted to take the opportunity to speak, I don't, I do want to give you that opportunity. But don't feel compelled to. You have been appointed. Okay? So seeing, seeing none, we'll just say thank you very much for your volunteering to the town, and we look forward to working with you all in the coming, coming year. So thank you very much. Give me one moment while I just make sure we've gotten all those. Okay, so we have a couple here. We received a message from Maria Montima, who we just appointed to the 300th Anniversary Committee. She, she applied for a couple of other positions, but she did send a message in today saying that she would like to be part of the 300th Committee, but she wanted to withdraw her, her, her application for the others. In those cases, we have as many applicants as we have active candidates, so I'd like to just cover those very quickly. The first is the Energy and Sustainability Committee. There's, there are three candidates, three vacancies. And if we remove Miss Montima, then we have three candidates. David Bilow, incumbent. Nathan Cleveland, incumbent. And Arthur Rigor Deiva. And he would, I think he was on the committee in the past, and he would like to rejoin. Sorry? Also incumbent, so I apologize. It wasn't listed on here. My apologies. Also incumbent. That is also true of the Zoning Board of Appeals, where there's one vacancy. And with Miss Montima removing her application, Sherem Epro is the only candidate. So is there a motion to, to, to appoint those applicants?
So made.
Okay, made by Mr. McCrisky. And it was seconded, I think, by a couple of different people, but Mr. Carrera. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Once again, I think, I just want to thank everybody for volunteering on behalf of the town, and I very much appreciate your service. Anybody who would like to speak, I'd like to give that opportunity. Do not feel like you, like you have to, though. Okay, hearing nobody, we're going to move on to, to the next items. Let's see. We already did the cultural council. Okay, the remaining seats, we'll do the Council on Aging next. We have three applicants, we have two vacancies. So the applicants are Kiran, I got it, Wes. I've got to get used to wearing glasses, I apologize. So we have Kiran Majora. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Paul Rosenblatt and Mary Ellen Soares. Mary Ellen Soares is an incumbent. So we would like to just say hi and chat with the various people who are applying. So Mr. Jumdar? If you don't mind pulling that closer. Also, thank you very much for your application. I apologize if I, if I got your name wrong.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity, opportunity to be here. I've applied for the Council on Aging Board membership. I could not address all- I could not address all the community activities that I have done. So I have listed a few that I'd like to add to support my application. I'm already a volunteer in two different categories with the Council on Aging. The first one was something very simple, such as for the event, a setup, tables, chairs, what have you, table decorations. However, the second is a lot more important activity, which was providing grocery and food supplies to the recipients who are housebound. The seniors face a huge issue, loss of freedom due to loss of mobility. So this was a fantastic opportunity for me to work with a town employee who was a town, was the driver of the van. I helped him load unload all the groceries, all the packages at the pantry that's next to the library, and deliver them to somewhere around nine to 12 recipients in different localities within the town. And then, again, pick up, deliver to the apartments of the individual who were the recipients. The best part of that was the expression of gratitude, the expression of thanks on all of the recipients. Some of them even offered water because we were doing what we like to do. So that was wonderful. So this was basically the high priority that I have to make some sort of an impact, a fractional impact, on making it simpler for the seniors. I'm one of them. I'm 78 years old. But I'm trying to make as best as possible small impact on making their lives a little bit simpler. I have been a Stoughton Library Tutor Volunteer, Literacy Tutor Volunteer. I also am a volunteer at the Old Colony Y Food Pantry. I've done fundraising for Food Pantry in Randolph, 5K Road Race back in November. Hope to do it this November again. I also plan to run a half marathon fundraiser for the Dana Farber Cancer Institute. And this is a personal experience event for me. For many years, Hartford Marathon, I did a lot of fundraising, almost 10 years, for St. Francis Hospital, where my wife worked in the cancer center. So this was almost personal, too. Jane Desberg is the chairperson of the Council on Aging at this point. And I ran into her at one of the events where I was volunteering, and she pointed me in the direction of Sharon Rotary Club. Rotary organization is basically service of herself. So again, another community activity. I have been part of the Rotary International since almost 80s in my previous life in Connecticut. And this is a good opportunity for me to join the Rotary Club again. So that was a fantastic opportunity. I've been on the board for various nonprofit organizations in Connecticut, Estanta Community College Foundation, allied physically challenged, mentally challenged people, that kind of organization. I have been on the Town Planning and Zoning Commissions, Econ Development Commissions in Enfield, Connecticut. And finally, I'm here to give back for all the years of what I have received. So thank you very much. I'm also a Massachusetts Professional Registered Engineer and trying to simplify what I can for myself with interest of same age group seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. So one thing I would like to ask before we go on. I might be alone in this. I do take, I think knowing people's names and getting them right is important. And I think I might have butchered your name a couple of times. So I would like to record straight. Could you please pronounce your last name, sir?
Kiran is my first name. Majmadar is my last name, same as it's spelled.
Perfect.
No, there won't be a test.
Thank you very much. I won't make that mistake again. I very much appreciate it.
Any questions?
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a button on the microphone, if you don't mind pressing that.
Oh, excuse me?
Oh, I was just letting you know there's a button on the microphone.
Yeah. Not used to it. My name is Paul Rosenblatt, and my daughter is Joanna. So I just want to make sure you all know that in our family, we have certain political leanings. So keep that in mind in case you have any doubts. And those leanings are very strong. Anyway, I have lived in this town about 64, 65 years and did nothing as far as anything political or therefore, other than playing about 12 years for the, in the softball league that Tommy Halloran, who you might know or might have known, started. And that was one of my first things that I got to get together with people in the town. In fact, your father was a good friend of mine from playing softball and also stoic basketball. I know nothing about the Council of Aging, other than I'm aged. So I figured maybe I can help out by having a little bit of experience over the years. As you can see by my hat, I am a Korean veteran and very proud of it. And although I didn't do the 250 years, I was only in it when it was about 190 years. I am very, very proud of being a veteran. In fact, this jacket is for New England Honor Flight, which is, really got me to wear the hat because they took us to Washington. It's a group that takes, well, at that time there, when I went, there were Second World War and Korean War veterans who went. And we went to Washington for the day, and they gave us a real, real great time. And we got to be proud that we served the country. And to this day, I'm very proud about it and will wear the hat for that reason. I worked in Brockton. I had a manufacturing plant and worked there for about 40 years until I retired. And one of the things that I learned was people that worked for me were Cape Verdean, Haitian, Cuban, Portuguese, maybe a few other things, too. I forget. And it was a very ecumenical situation. And I, I think if I went back today and talked to them, they would all be happy to see me. And like I say, as far as knowing anything about the Council of Aging, I don't, just that I'm aged, and I figure maybe I can help out by my experience. And that's basically it.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. McCrisky?
Yes, thank you. Paul, how would you? You've been up to the Council on Aging in the past, right?
Excuse me?
You've been up to the Council on Aging in the past?
No, no.
Not at all? Okay. I'm curious-
Nothing other than I saw it in the paper, and I said, let me, I'm an old guy, so maybe I can help out.
I don't know everything about the Council on Aging, you know? And I've been in there a lot of times, so we're okay.
I'm willing to learn, though.
Yeah, I'm curious to get your thoughts on how we could reach out through the Council on Aging, veterans. And I'm not sure everything they do, so they may be doing something. I'd like to hear your ideas, because we still had, you know, we've got a lot of Korean vets out there still. You know, and we've got, you know, some, some of the Vietnam veterans, you know? And, and they're getting to the age. I mean, geez, I'm a year away from, from hitting my 65. So there's a lot of people my age out there. I'd like to get your ideas on what you think you could do to, or your ideas. It's tough to say what you can do, but your ideas on how we reach out to some of the veterans now that really don't come out in public. They stand out at the Veterans Day or Memorial Day Parade, and they don't step up. So I'd like to get your ideas. From a Korean War vet, you know, you've been there, and you've seen a lot, experienced a lot. What can we do to get to the veterans that don't want to be bothered? How, what can we do to reach them, to bring them in and let them know that we want to help?
I'm really not sure. I meet different veterans over the years because they'll catch my hat and want to say something. And every veteran has got a different idea of what he went through and what, you know? I certainly don't want to talk about it. But the bottom line is just getting their input into what they might feel. Maybe I can come up with something that'll be a solution to get them, you know, involved.
Yeah. It just, you know, and I, I see Sharon Johnson at the back of the room, and her work with our veterans is phenomenal. And she may be sitting here saying, Joe, I'll talk to you later, because she might know what's going on. But it's just something that's always, you know, when I go to the Council on Aging, I don't see a lot of people wearing their veterans hats. And I've always thought, are we missing an opportunity? So I look forward to having you on the board and trying to make some headway and make a difference.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Carrera?
It's not really a question. It's, it's, it's a comment and... Oh, wait. You're set? Sure you, Mr. Chairman, to Paul. I know exactly what you're saying about how some veterans-
Sorry. You better start putting new batteries in these every night.
I know exactly what you say when you say each veteran is, is different. Each veteran keeps their experience inside them. Very rarely can you get them to say too much about what they've experienced. I think it's like they don't want anybody to have to go through what they went through. So to just approach them face to face, sometimes it's hard. Maybe, you know, we can offer something that you could think of or what they do. Then you can reach out, and sometimes they're a little bit more receptive. So I, I understand what you're saying. But it's, it's, I know what type of man you are. I know what type of business you, you've run. I've, I've been around you people for a long time, and I couldn't ask to know. Some people don't understand, but I understand what you people stand for, Joanna, what, what you like to say. But you did run an excellent business. And he probably made one of the best mattresses on the South Shore, and there's no lie, because people would go, where'd you get this mattress? And then, next thing you know, you tell them, and that's how word of mouth is the best of everything. So I commend you. I commend Joanna, Brad, and your good family.
I appreciate that comment.
Putting yourself out at this age.
Like I say, I knew Pat from many years ago. In fact, when I first moved to Stoughton, back in the 61, 62, whenever it was, he was instrumental in, the house I got had no lawn or nothing, and he did it all. And he did a hell of a good job. And B and C was my favorite after that.
Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Rosenblatt, thank you so much for sharing your background. I really got a chance to know you, and I want to say thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And thank you for putting your name in for this position.
Excellent. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions? Mr. Gito, I think if you're speaking, you're on mute. Okay, so I think, I think we're good. And I don't have any questions. I very much appreciate you applying, and, and also thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
There's, there's one final applicant. This is Mary Ellen Soers. She is an incumbent. I don't see her online, is Mary Ellen Soers here in person or online? Okay. So we have two seats.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a failure in my computer here just for a moment. I had no questions.
Oh, it's good, good to hear you. Thank you so much, Mr. Gito. Okay, so, so we're at a stage now where we have, we've got two seats. We have one incumbent and two applicant, two new applicants. So there's a total of three people. And I'll entertain any nominations. Mr. Carrera?
Mr.? I nominate Paul Rosenblatt.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, nominations, there's, there's nothing wrong with the second, but they do not require one. Vice Chair Roberts?
Mr. Chairman, this is a tough decision. This was really, really tough. I nominate Mr. Majmadar, Majmadar, and Mr. Rosenblatt. Can I nominate two? Because it was tough.
I think we're going to stick with, stick with one. That's okay.
Okay, I'll, because Mr. Majmadar was the first one on the list. I'll go with that, but it was, I don't know what to do. It was so tight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any other nominations? And Mr. McCrisky?
I nominate Mary Ellen Soers.
Okay. So we have all three. So we're going to go in the order in which they were nominated, and we'll get the entire vote of the board. So the first one was Mr. Rosenblatt. It was the first nomination. And give me one second. Two, three. Okay. So it's a yes or no vote on, on Mr. Majmadar. And that will start with Mr. Gito.
This, this vote is for Mr. Majmadar?
Majmadar, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Carrera?
No.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Okay. I vote yes as well. Okay, so we have one more seat remaining. Mr. Majmadar, you've been appointed. I thank you very much for, for, for applying. The next applicant is, I had these, I had these backwards. I apologize. I think I messed that up. I am so sorry. So-
I was going to straighten you up.
No, I appreciate it. Yeah, it was, they would have happened one or two anyway. So, but I apologize, Mr. Rosenblatt. So Mr. Rosenblatt was the first nominated. We're, we're still going to stick with the, with the current vote. This is for the second seat. And we will start with Mr. Gito again.
Who am I voting for this time?
This is Paul Rosenblatt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So those are the two seats. I thank you very much, Mr. Rosenblatt. Thank you so much for, for, for applying, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. So those are all of the, all of the boards and committees. Oh, no, we have, sorry, one more. The constables. But Ms., Ms. Walsh, did you have something you'd like to add?
I just wanted to ask if I'd missed the constable vote.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's one of the downsides of going out of orders. I lose track of where I'm at. But we have seven vacancies, and we have two applicants. But we try to be just a little bit more thorough with the constable position. We're going to, I'm going to take the- We're going to take the incumbent first. So this is Michael Bodett. Mr. Bodett, would you mind joining us for a moment?
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. If you don't mind just telling us a little bit about the length of service, I know you've been constable for a while, but really more than anything out of curiosity, I'd just love to hear some of the, some of your biography with regard to working in the town of Stoughton as a constable.
As constable of Stoughton, I've been appointed for 24 years. And this is the first time, besides the first time I was appointed, that I've had to come up here, but that's fine. To serve the town is an honor. It is an honor. I do it for the people of the town, not for, you know, fame and fortune, that's for dang That's, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's anything civil that we do.
Yeah.
About it.
Yeah. The reason why I wanted to, I really, more than anything else, wanted to just highlight your length of service and that's why I asked you to come up because I know you've been doing it for a very long time.
Anything civil, subpoenas, summons, warrants, anything, KPS, whatever. It deals mostly with lawyers, but I do pro bono sometimes for the court.
Excellent. I will, just since he's up, anybody have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say it's a testament to Mr. Bodett and our appointing him that in all the 24 years, we have never had to face any problems with anything that he's ever done and it's never come back on us. So I'm proud that this is one of our best appointments in this.
Yeah.
And I agree with Mr. Carrera. You have my vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excellent. Since we have so many positions, we can actually just go ahead and if there's a nomination for Mr. Bodett to the role of constable?
So made.
Second?
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor? Mr. Gino?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you so much for your continued service to the town.
Thank you, lady in town.
Michael, if I could have voted, I would have voted yes. You just wanted to jump on.
And we do have a new applicant as well.
Get in front of it.
Mr. Troy Singletary. And as I said, I like to pronounce people's names correctly, so if I've made a mistake, please correct me.
That's perfect.
The agenda does, your name is misspelled on the agenda, I just want to make that clear. It's not Tori, it's Troy.
Yes.
And so thank you very much for joining us. If you don't mind telling us a little bit about yourself and, you know, the, you have a good number of recommendations here, so I think that speaks very highly, but I'd just like to hear your experience and a little bit about why you'd like to serve as a constable for the town of Stoughton.
Well, I come from a long line, background of military, state police, Boston Housing Police. I got two boys that's in the military now, Air Force. They are in Japan and Germany. And what I instilled in them is what I always do with everybody and everything that I do. So I make sure that everybody has fair shot. Be fair. Just, it doesn't matter what it is, just be fair. And that's basically my whole thing, just being fair. Also, myself, I'm not a constable. I just wanted to reiterate that. I'm not a constable. I was working with a constable as far as in process serving. So I was getting my feet wet on that, if you would, you know. But other than that, I'm boring. I'm seriously boring. I had a trucking business that kind of went under a little bit, so I'm going to revamp that. But meanwhile, I want to be able to come to Stoughton, which I lived here for 12 years, and just do my part. I want to make the family proud, even though it's not military police or military or police officer, I can at least do something civil. So that's my whole background on things.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the members of the board? No questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say to Mr. Singletary, it's a pleasure to meet you and thank you for applying to this role.
Oh, thank you.
I did not see any, nothing jumped out. It was all good and you have my vote.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Without any further questions or comments, does anybody have and would like to offer a nomination?
I nominate Mr. Troy Singletary, please.
Thank you so much. So we have the nomination. And for the vote, Mr. Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes, definitely.
I vote yes as well. Thank you so much and very much looking forward to working with you in the future.
All right, thank you. And it's great to have you guys just be here. It's like I would just give everybody a big hug.
That makes one of us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
We could use a hug.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is item number six. To consider the donation of surplus vehicle 2005 international ambulance. See, I will, unless you object, turn this over to the town manager to walk us through what the assignment is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On June 4th of this year, this month, I received a letter from the chief of police, Chief Mike Carroll. The first line says...
Fire chief, just...
Did I say police?
Yeah.
I've been with Donna all day, so forgive me. Fire chief, Mike Carroll. And the first sentence of the letter that you have before you, but for the purpose of public disclosure, "I am writing to formally request the designation of our 2005 international ambulance squad one as surplus property for disposal or reassignment." And as you know, through our bylaws, that must be voted by the select board. Scott's going to help me with this, but the attached letter we have to this, it's a 20-year-old ambulance that's been out of service and stored at the Armory for almost six months. We hope to repurpose this piece of equipment so that it can haul the fire truck, the small, what's it called, unit?
Maximum.
Maximum.
1928 maximum.
28 maximum. We need a vehicle to transport it. We've been paying considerable amount of money to transport it over any distance at all. This piece of equipment will work. We'll need to repurpose it, as Scott pointed out, and then we would be reassigning it to the historical commission. I think that's all the history report the letter explains and the attached agreement drafted by Mr. Winter explains that it'll be an as-is transaction or repurposing. And we'll have to change the language that you have before you in the entitled donation agreement to a repurpose agreement. And with a friendly amendment, we'd recommend that that change be made. And Scott can speak to that, I'm sure, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes. This truck, even though it's being not retired, it's just surplus to their needs because they have newer ambulances and stuff, but the truck is not worn out as to qualify as being traded, auctioned, or junked. So by repurposing, it serves a better life, what's left of it, and it probably will do pretty good because it's been well cared for. It was back up for a while and now they don't need it. So I'd like to make the friendly amendment to change the wording from donation and then have Brian Winter straighten it out later to the word repurpose. That way, it's still part of the fleet. It will still be maintained.
Thank you, Scott. Perfect. And if there's any, you know, though I trust you, Mr. Carrera, with these things, and I just don't know this area of the law at all, I'm not going to pretend to, but if there's any defect, it will be voted tonight. We'll simply have Brian Winter fix it and put it on the extended agenda and we'll kind of work it out through that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Scott is 100% correct because I know part of our bylaws and part of state laws, we cannot make donations to anyone. So by virtue of the title, it suggests that we need different language. So if you have no objection, I'll take the lead in speaking with attorney Winter tomorrow and we'll redraft it with respect to repurpose.
Perfect. I think we can still move forward with the vote tonight and with just the change from a donation agreement to a repurpose agreement. And any language that's incidental to, or it needs to be corrected in order to accommodate that, that will also be part of this vote. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I support this item, repurpose agreement. I do have a question and I understand it has outlived its usefulness in the original capacity, but Mr. called for mentor and it would be used by the historical commission? Can someone explain a little bit more about that? Oh, that would be Mr. McCrisky. Thank you.
I can speak to one thing, then Joe can. As far as being its usefulness, it cannot be used as an ambulance anymore because the new ones have evolved in a different way and this truck is not acceptable for getting the people in anymore. They were pretty tough, even when they were new. Now the newer ones drop bag, they have airbags drop and everything's a lot better. That's why you see a lot more of the same ambulances working out of different towns and not the big internationals anymore. So now Joe can speak to how he'll, they'll...
Before you do, Mr. Carrera, just so I understand correctly, it's, in a sense, it's an ambulance, it couldn't pass like an inspection or be like certified as an ambulance?
Right, that's what it is.
So it can't be used as an ambulance? It's got to be...
It doesn't meet the standards anymore.
But it can still be used for other things.
Right.
Perfect, okay. Ms. McCrisky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town manager, you know, for entertaining this idea and bringing it forward. It's correct that the ambulance cannot be used as an ambulance. So that basically leaves it to a chassis because the body would have to be removed from that vehicle to use it for any other purpose. And again, it's older and it's not anything that's going to be a first run. It's a 2005, it's got a lot of engine hours on it, so it's not something we would ever use for a first-run vehicle anywhere. The purpose of this vehicle will be to affix it with a trailer hitch that will allow us to move the 1928 fire truck that we have that was just restored with the CPC grant to allow us to bring that to further locations. That truck travels at a whopping speed of 28 miles an hour. And when you take it to shows, it is a great ambassador of the town of Stoughton. And there are lots of people that see it, take pictures, kids have fun, you know, and it just allows us to make it more available and get it out there and, you know, a piece of Stoughton's living history. And as well, I will most likely be filing a grant application through the CPC for the 1855 hand tub that we have. So this is, it's not going to tax, it's not going to cost the taxpayers of Stoughton. The money for the fuel will be borne from the account that I have from donations and that's it. It's not intended to be anything detrimental, something to be one more asset to the town where we can get that truck out, let people see it in other towns and share our history, you know, in the great town of Stoughton, let people see what we have. So that's all I've got that I can add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Roberts, do you have any further questions?
No further questions. If you're ready for a motion, I will...
Yeah, go for it.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Gino. All yours, sir.
How often does the, does our fire engine leave town?
Not very often because it can't travel that far.
Would we, would we put in an article to buy a vehicle to transport it?
Mr. Gino, I really don't, thank you for entertaining that. I really don't think it would be worth it for the amount of time. That's why this vehicle with its age and really can't be used for much other, is suitable for the periodical time that we would do this. It's only six months out of the year. We're not going to go anywhere with it in the winter. It stays in. It's not made to be out there. It is, as we know now, it's a, you know, a very expensive piece of equipment. So it'll be six months out of the year and maybe a couple times of the month in that time period. So it will do more of sitting like it does now. We'll just use a little bit more of that time before it's useless and it is a 2005. There's a lot of engine hours on it. It will require some repairs periodically, but I, again, I don't think that I would even feel comfortable myself ever saying it's worth buying a new truck. I think it's better to take something that's like this, that will get a little bit more life out of it for a very good purpose.
And where's it, where's it going to be stored?
Right now, it will be stored in the antique garage in Avon that I store the fire truck in. It's climate-controlled, very limited access, alarmed, and my budget for the historical society, the insurance for that vehicle is covered through that. And I would be including that as well with the new vehicle unless I can find a better option. But the insurance is not a lot of money because it's going to have very low mileage put on it.
How much would we get for it if we sold it?
I don't think you'd get $2,000 for it because it takes, you have to take the body. It can't, the body can't be used by anything. But, you know, Scott could add to that, I think. But usually these vehicles, because of the amount of engine hours on them, because they sit more running, it's not maybe the mileage because they're not going far as an ambulance, staying within the borders and maybe a Boston run once in a while, but there's a lot of engine hours on them when people are inside the house, when it's on the call. So it really, you don't know how long the motor would last.
How much does it cost to just haul fire truck from one town to another?
Well, I can tell you that when we were doing the restoration, it was $918 to go to Connecticut down and back. So it was $1,800 just to bring the truck down and back because it has to be insured, you know, for the fire truck, you know, and because if that company were to ruin it, you know, if it ever happened, that's what that cost. You know, I'm lucky right now that a private businessman loans me his ramp truck, but it's not available all the time because he's got a business to run with it. So it just allows us more liberty to do different things and get the truck out there, let people see it, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So there is, actually already exists a motion that's made by Mr. Carrera to reuse the current document that says a donation agreement to change it to repurpose agreement and to make any other changes necessary to fulfill that change to a repurpose agreement. And is there a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. A friendly amendment to that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Also to, what was it, allow or grant Mr. Coulter authority to work with attorney Winter to finalize the language.
Yeah, perfect. So we'll have that. So the motion is for the, to have a repurpose agreement. Mr. McCrisky, sorry, Mr. Carrera, do you accept that amendment? Perfect, accepted. So the motion is made, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts with a friendly amendment that town council and Tom Coulter be authorized to make the changes to the original agreement. All in favor? Mr. Gino?
No.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you so much. And then the, oh, we do have a couple more items. Let's try and get through these quickly. We have a town vehicle use policy. Actually, between this and the Veterans Memorial Square policies, can we bring these up at the next meeting?
I thought it said that July something...
That was correct. July 2nd for the Veterans Memorial Policy. This was just a review to make sure everyone received the document to review.
Okay.
And the vehicle policy, July 1st, sorry, July 1st, not July 2nd.
So we'll be meeting on July 1st to vote Item 7 and 9, 7 and 8, sorry. This is the vehicle use policy and more importantly, for those purposes of the policy for consideration for a Veterans Memorial Square dedication, proposed amendments to be voted. So this is a policy that we're looking to implement. We'll pick those up at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I have one minute to speak to those two policies?
Yes, please.
If I may. What we're trying to do, what Jilda and I are trying to do, and we thank you for your direction on this, is to give the members more time to review policies that have been proposed and drafted. In this case, for both these policies, it's been several weeks. And then the next meeting, what we're proposing is that the members, having thought through it, offer amendments to the draft and that they be seconded and voted. And in the third meeting, which would be two weeks after that, Jilda and I would propose to the members the amended policy for your consideration and the vote of the board. And it gives more time to review it, to think about it, to propose amendments. And I would offer up to the board that if during that review process, any member would like us to draft their amendment and to put it into print and writing and submit it to the members in advance so that the meeting is more efficient, we're happy to do that. All you'd have to do is dictate it to us and we'll not only type it, we'll circulate it. And the objective is to adopt a, almost a legislative process for making policy that we've heard members clearly, they need more time to review, to consider, to amend, and we want to accommodate those very reasonable requests. So that's why we're accepting, we're proposing this process.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager. The last order of business, we'll go through the various comments, select board comments. Mr. Gino, do you have any comments?
No.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to inform the board that, that on Sunday, June 1st, the high school had their awards, their scholarship award ceremony, and there were three students that received an award. And these three students are truly remarkable in their academics, athletics, and attitude of service. The first was Leah McCarthy. She will be attending Tufts University and majoring in neuroscience. The second one was Lauren Mitchell, who will be attending Loyola University, Chicago Honors College, and majoring in criminal justice on the pre-law track. And the third is Ariel Rothman, who will be attending Worcester Polytech Institute and majoring in biology and biotechnology. All of them thanked us, but specifically, one of the recipients sent us a thank you letter and I wanted to acknowledge that. And it was addressed to me, but she really meant to all of us. So she said, "My name is Lauren Mitchell and I wanted to reach out and personally thank you for choosing me to be a recipient of the Frederick Richard Scholarship. I am extremely honored and excited to accept this scholarship. It is going to be a big help with my college tuition this upcoming fall and I am so grateful. Thanks again. All the best, Lauren Mitchell." So I thought that was wonderful and I wanted to share that with you. The next is, I wanted to remind the board that I am on the Advisory Commission of the Office of the Governor of the Commonwealth, local government that's pursuant to the MGL Chapter 3, Section 62. So Advisory Commission of Local Governments. And there is an initiative that she is proposing, and I spoke on that recently under Secretary's talk, and it's the Massachusetts Means Business Initiative. And I was in favor of that initiative and I wanted you to know some of my comments. I said, "This seems like a great jump forward in helping businesses cut red tape and make their processes more efficient and effective. This means that Massachusetts businesses can be more competitive and in turn continue to help grow our state and local economies. Our cities and towns rely on local businesses, big and small, to thrive. Eliminating outdated and needless requirements can help a business establish itself more swiftly, begin hiring and also put money back into the local economy that much faster. Updating licensure and educational requirements will bring more hires to these businesses, increase our talent pool, and lift more communities up. Easing the process for businesses to attach to existing poles has huge potential to swiftly increase broadband across the state. I know this is a complicated undertaking and rulemaking process, so we are happy to see this push involving the Department of Telecommunications and Cable and the Department of Public Utilities to create this efficiency and enhance broadband coverage throughout the Commonwealth. Finally, allowing businesses to embrace new technologies to create more efficiency such as eliminating paper requirements is an example and model for municipalities and can in turn make our work easier." So I just wanted to share that with you, what I was saying. And then the final comment, another topic, but I wanted to remind everyone about the Juneteenth event. That is this Thursday and it will be at the high school, starting at 11 o'clock. Please see the flyer, which has a little more detail. Hope to see everyone on Thursday and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, thank you so much. Mr. Carrera?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Mr. McCrisky? So I just have two items. First, I want to let people know that tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the public library, there's going to be an event to honor Harvey Levinson. He is a, he is, I don't actually know how long he's been on the library trustees, but he has been chair for 40 years, four zero years. So his contributions to our community are, you know, go long and deep that he has contributed significantly. And if you happen to be around and are able to attend this honor for Mr. Levinson, I'm sure he'd very much appreciate it. It's at 11 o'clock at the library. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town, so I won't be able to make that, but I very much appreciate his service to the town. The only other thing I'll add is that today was the last day of school for all of the kids who didn't graduate. I think graduation was, I don't say over the weekend or maybe it was last weekend. But for all the rest of the kids who haven't, didn't graduate, today was the last day of school and I'm sure that, I'd be shocked if a single one of them is watching right now, but I will nevertheless...
I didn't think I would.
Yeah, I will nevertheless wish them good luck and enjoy your summer. You earned it.
I did that when I was in fourth grade. I was in the select board.
Yeah. But no, my son was finished up his last day of school and I wasn't there because I was at work, but apparently he came home and laid on the ground, just quietly sat there, feeling the cold tile on his skin, knowing he's free, finally free. So he's going to enjoy the summer. I hope all the kids do. Next up, Town Manager comments.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I've got an announcement. The Stoughton Community Garden at the Cape and Reynolds Farm is owned by the town of Stoughton. For citizens' information, there are 37 raised garden beds that are four feet wide by eight feet long, available for Stoughton residents to use by fee for one planting per season. It's, gardening season has already begun and ends on November 15th. Please see the Town Clerk's office for additional details if you'd like to rent one of those gardens. And it's already building community with people meeting up there and sharing their interest in all types of different gardens. So it's pretty exciting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And finally, citizens' comments. Ms. Walsh?
For some reason, I did not get...
I think we are shortage of mics. Let me bring you one over.
I will do that.
Thank you. With the SRA here, I'm not sure if we had enough mics.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. Previously in the meeting, someone mentioned bringing more folks into the senior center and you've all heard me complain that many events have waitlists because the building simply isn't big enough. And I've been harping on that for a while, but I have a request and I'd like you to ask Town Council to check into the CPA and see how they define recreation because we've been able to get CPA funds for recreation. They're just building the street hockey up at Halloran Park. And if you look at the scan that it, the monthly newsletter that comes out from the council, and there's copies of this available that the Town Council can check out, but they have things like yoga, tai chi, walking, zumba. There's also games. Recreation to me is games. Street hockey is a game. Bananagrams, bingo, mahjong, Scrabble. And then there are things like crocheting and quilting and knitting. I'd like to know what the definition in the state law for recreation is. Does it include any of those items? And if it does, should we go forward with a plan to expand the senior center? Perhaps we could get some CPA funds based on the fact that there is indeed recreation going on in that building. It may not be street hockey and maybe some of you don't consider crocheting and knitting and quilting and things like zumba as really recreation, but perhaps the definition in the state law is broad enough. You may recall that when this first came out, when the CPA was new, it didn't even cover things like football and improvements to stadiums, things like that, and various towns fought that and it was expanded. And it's nice that we've been able to do more for young people, but it might be nice if we could use some CPA, since we're all, many of our seniors are paying the CPA tax, to use it toward expanding the building and including more recreation because the building as it is now has to be shared. So these exercise classes have to be fitted in wherever they can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do know from my experience in my hometown, recreation for seniors does qualify under the state statute for CPC money and other grants. We just have to remind the COA that they need to be proactive in applying in September for that money for recreation. It doesn't happen automatically. There's got to be a formal application by a certain deadline. So I'll remind them of that again tomorrow, that they should be applying in September for CPC money and all other grants that come out of the state.
I didn't mean, you know, to do, I know that you apply preliminarily in August for September. If we don't have plans for the building to expand, the money will just sit there.
There is no plan right now for the building to expand, so that's going to require advocacy and the challenge we have, it's competing with schools and police departments and everything else. We are very close to our debt limit and I'm just being practical. Any new construction is going to require debt and we're close to that debt limit should the police department move forward. So I have no problem working with the COA. I completely support that. Where I come from, the COA is very active and a key part of the community and a real service to the seniors, but it requires somebody to take on an advocacy role for a project or for programs. And I've spoken to the COA about that. If they plan to expand, they got to be at the tip of the spear in terms of that advocacy.
My fear is the, I mean, I don't know why the Council on Aging hasn't been in here for the last few years campaigning for this. I don't go to their meetings. It just is disappointing as a senior to be put on a waitlist. Thank you.
I agree with you.
I agree as well. And I think this has been floating out there for a little while and this problem is, it's not going away. We are an aging population, we're an aging town and we're going to continue to have people who need to come out and do things. So this is how we stay healthy. This is how we keep going. So over the next couple of months, I don't want to assign you up or anything, but would you mind working together to see, just provide ourselves with some options and try to come up with something that would satisfy really an ongoing and growing need?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, and I don't mean to be cynical, but the gentle lady requested a year ago that we put air conditioning units in the window and that took almost a year to get it done in the kitchen. So I've got to spend more time over there. I've got to put together an FAC group. I've got to...
I see if we can squeeze you in.
I've got to work with the board, their board, to help them understand their role in the advocacy process for competing dollars and it's been on my list of things, so I'm happy to take that challenge.
Yeah, and, you know, we have, the Council on Aging, the things they do, they do very well. I think that we might have to just, perhaps just work together with them to get them to advocate, you know, for this. And, you know, they're passionate, they work hard. I feel confident that they'll work with us. But I also agree that it's important not to necessarily take it out of their hands. This is their role. This is what they do. And so we'll have to work with them and not try to, you know, make sure that we're not stepping on toes.
Okay.
Awesome. I really appreciate it. If there's no further questions or comments... Yes, sorry, Mr. McCrisky, you had asked. Apologies.
No, just as a follow-up, when we had Town Manager mentioned the community garden, I think it would be remiss if this board didn't recognize the hard work of Richard Terry. Rich Terry has, when he took control of the dog park and that community garden, it just took right off. That project got done. So I am proud to say, Rich Terry, if he's watching, I hope you are, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. He has taken on that Cape and Reynolds property with so much diligence, it's crazy. It just popped up alive and people are seeing it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me.
I'll use a dog metaphor. He's like a bulldog that grabs the rope and he doesn't let go. He really didn't. He's been extremely persistent and Mr. Terry's was...
He got the funding as well.
Yeah, it was his vision. He got the funding and he worked his tail off.
He got the call that the Terry...
Thank you, Rich.
Absolutely, absolutely. Besides being a hardworking guy, he's also one of the nicest people I've ever met in my entire life, so a real treasure. Okay, without anything else on our agenda, we have an executive session. This is... This is executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Gino? I think he's gone. Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
No.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we will be entering executive session and we will be adjourning from executive session, not returning to the open session again. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. It's 9:52.